And I'm first going to ask Councilman Underwood to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our first agenda item tonight is a presentation. We are going to be recognizing the retirement of a very special individual. And I'm going to turn this over to Chief Fangeli right now.
Thank you. Good evening. It's not my retirement, so just want to throw that out there before I start. So this is a special occasion, although solemn. We're going to be retiring our second K-9, K-9 Kilo. And Sergeant Huntley is here with Kilo. Sergeant Huntley is Kilo's handler. Sergeant Pat Huntley is a 20-year veteran. And he actually started Plainville Police Department's K-9 program 15 years ago with the very first dog, Osten. He worked with Osten until Osten passed away in 2018. And then Sergeant Huntley found a six-month-old yellow lab retriever named Kilo, who then he began to train him. Labs aren't generally known for that type of work. However, Kilo's high energy and drive, I think, combined with Sergeant Huntley's constant personal attention and training led to a successful career of seven years of work for the police department as a certified tracking and narcotics K-9. That's 49 years in dog years. So anybody that works 49 years for the same town deserves to retire. And so does Kilo. Some of the, you know, and I've watched Kilo myself on many tracks since I've been here as chief. People that have fled, we had bank robberies where people fled. And when the dog can't find, cannot find that person, that means the person is not in the area. Kilo was a great tracking dog. Some of the favorite successes that he's had is the tracking of suicidal persons. One person in particular, that track led through many industrial areas, over and under chain link fences and through several yards where this person was found by the dog and then, of course, gave up. And if that person wasn't found, they may not be here today. So, you know, police canines like Kilo are worth their weight in gold. For them, work is fun. They put themselves at risk every single day to protect their fellow officers and to protect the citizens for nothing more than the chance to chew a bone or play with a tennis ball. So it's a great employee because there's no pension, there's no education reimbursement, there's nothing. But Kilo is a great officer. And upon Kilo's retirement, he will be adopted by the Huntley family that has cared for him and loved for him ever since he was a puppy. They will shower him with love. And, you know, thanks to also Pat Huntley for 15 years of dedicated service. Being a police K-9 handler is probably one of the most difficult jobs in the police department because you do not leave your job at the door. You take your job home with you, and it slobbers and barks 24 hours a day. And of course, the amount of training and attention that you have to put on this dog to keep the dog performing at top efficiency takes a special person. And that's what Sergeant Huntley is. So thank you, Sergeant Huntley, for your 15 years of spearheading the Plainville Police Department's K-9 unit. And thank you to K-9 Kilo for your 49 years of service. Thank you.
Okay, lovely.
And so as part of the retirement is, of course, on adoption as well. And so I do have a certificate which the town clerk has. So if I could just read it. So this is a receipt. The town of Plainville hereby transfers ownership of retired police K-9 Kilo to Sergeant Patrick Huntley of the Plainville Police Department for $1 and other good and valuable consideration. Through this transfer and adoption, Kilo will become Mr. Huntley's personal property, and he shall assume all future care and maintenance costs and liability for Kilo. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Do we need another minute for photographs? Or?
Would you like a picture?
What's up?
Would you like a picture?
Okay. Okay.
All right. Three, two, one. Perfect. Chief, you want to get in too?
Yeah. I don't want to get near the dog when he's on his bone, but.
Yeah.
Well, here.
I've earned it.
This way.
All right. Three, two, one. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you all. The next agenda item is actually two public hearings. Now, these are two separate hearings, so we'll actually, you know, begin and end one and then begin and end the second one. The first one is the proposed amendment to ordinance, Chapter 355 Taxation. And I am going to ask the town clerk and town manager to give some information on this topic of the public hearing.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold public hearings at 7:00 PM on Monday, September 15, 2025, in the council chambers to hear public comments on: One, proposed amendment to ordinance, Chapter 355 Taxation; and Two, sewer user rate for the period November 1, 2025 to October 31, 2026. Copies of said proposed ordinance amendment and proposed sewer rates are available for public inspection during normal business hours in the office of the town clerk and online at www告普利州县的联席网站www告普利州县的联席网站 com dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 10th day of September, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Michael.
And if I may, Madam Chair, I'll just give a brief summary of the purpose of the amendment, the proposed amendment to Chapter 355 Taxation Amendment for Surviving Spouse Following the Line of Duty Death. Its purpose pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 12-81, the purpose of this article is to recognize and support the surviving spouse of public servant residents of the town of Plainville who have tragically lost their lives while performing duties as police officers, firefighters, or emergency medical technicians. The section shall provide 100% tax abatement on all Plainville real estate, real property taxes assessed on the principal residence of eligible surviving spouse as outlined below, up to $10,000 per year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. And is there anyone who wishes to speak on this topic? Yes. Chief Fangeli, please.
Thank you again for having me. Good evening. I'm Chief Fangeli of the Plainville Police Department, and it is my honor to stand before you in support of the proposed amendment to municipal Chapter 355 of the Plainville Town Code entitled Taxation Abatement for Surviving Spouse Following Line of Duty Death. I became a law enforcement officer, a first responder, in June of 1993. During the intervening 33 years, there have been thousands of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians that have lost their lives in the line of duty across this country. Each time one of us passes away, it affects us all deeply and profoundly, and it gives us a moment of honest reflection. Because as first responders, as employees who not just took a job, but took an oath to run towards danger, we all understand that any shift that we work can be our last shift, that we might leave behind our loved ones because we're doing a job that we love. Police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians do not do their jobs for money. This is not what motivates them. Honestly, there are days when we would gladly do our jobs for free, simply because we cherish the great responsibility that is put on our shoulders to help our fellow citizens in their time of need. And conversely, there are days when no payment is enough for what we have witnessed at work that day, seeing and experiencing tragedy, loss, destruction, and depravity that keeps us up some nights. First responders also don't do the job for glory. The last thing we want is for a person to call us a hero. It makes most first responders uncomfortable. Sure, we can perform heroic acts, but calling a first responder a hero makes it about them. And it's not about them, it's about the people they help. And they'll be the first ones to tell you that. The very simple secret is that we do this job because we don't want anyone else to do it. Our internal compass is all about taking the weight of awful events off of others' shoulders and onto our own, of making our communities blissfully unaware of what it takes to make that community a safe, secure, and happy place to live. And all we really want or need is a thank you, a simple gesture that says, "Great job, we appreciate you and care about you." I am truly lucky to work in Plainville because since the day I started here three and a half years ago, I have witnessed that appreciation many, many times. This town cares about its first responders and treats them with respect and appreciation. From elected officials to not elected officials, from employees to citizens, I have seen this with my own eyes and heard it with my own ears. The proposed taxation abatement for the surviving spouse following a line of duty death is an outcropping of the appreciation that is already present. It is a way of saying to those who are left behind by a first responder, to those that are suffering at their worst, "Thank you for letting your loved one take care of us. Now let us take care of you." Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I'll ask just once more. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this public hearing? No? Then I will declare that this public hearing on the amendment to the ordinance is closed, and we will open the second public hearing, and that is on the 2026 Sewer User Rate. And we did have a resident contact us today with a statement in writing because he could not be here. And I'm going to ask Councilman Underwood to please read that statement.
Yes, this statement is from John Kislik, and it states, "I would like to comment on the sewer user rate increase. I have made a habit of commenting on this increase every year so that there can be at least one citizen in the town of Plainville who cares enough to speak on this public hearing, either for or against. Because of my profession as a plumber who has spent more than 30 years protecting the health of our people by installing proper sanitary plumbing systems and working on several wastewater treatment plants, I realize how important the proper disposal and treatment of human waste is to the health of our residents. With that being said, since the town has added another good-sized neighborhood of houses to our treatment plant, I don't feel that the purpose, that the proposed 3% increase rate is out of line, considering the stage regulations that are added to the mix." So John Kislik says that the 3% is not out of line.
Okay, thank you very much. The floor is open for others who would like to speak in this public hearing? No one wishes to address the sewer rate at this point? Okay, thank you very much. And then I'll declare that public hearing closed as well. The next agenda item is approval of minutes of previous meeting. On August 18th, we actually had two separate meetings, so required two motions. One meeting, we were acting in the capacity of Water Pollution Control Authority, and the other one was the regular town council meeting. So if I could have one motion on the water pollution control.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
A motion to approve the August 18, 2025 Water Pollution Control Authority Annual Meeting Minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And may I have a motion on the second meeting that we had on that evening?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
If I could make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 18, 2025 regular meeting and the September 8, 2025 special meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And may I have a motion on the second meeting that we had on that evening?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
If I could make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 18, 2025 regular meeting and the September 8, 2025 special meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we've approved that. Next is announcements and reports.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I want to add to what the chief of police said about the citizens of Plainville. This is regards to the fire department. The council would like to thank the many departments that offered mutual aid during the death of Ray Moro. And it's unbelievable when we let the citizens know how many fire departments were involved. So Ben Gettleman, Councilman Gettleman and myself are gonna read the fire departments that offered aid to Plainville during this sad time. Hebron Fire Department, Middletown Fire Department, Newington Fire Department, North Haven Fire Department, Rocky Hill, Simsbury, South Windsor, Southington, Suffield, Thompsonville, Tuxus Holes Fire Department, Unionville, West Hartford Fire Department, Weathersfield, and Wellcut Fire Department.
Councilman Gettleman?
Also, we'd like to recognize Avon Fire Department, Berlins Fire Department, Bloomfield Fire Department, Bristol Fire Department, Burlington Fire Department, Canton Fire Department, Cheshire Fire Department, Colchester Fire Department, Cromwell Fire Department, East Granby Fire Department, Warehouse Point Fire Department, East Windsor, Farmington Fire Department, the Glastonbury Fire Department, and the Granberry Fire Department. We owe a debt of gratitude that we hopefully never have to repay.
And thank you to both of you for doing that. It was truly remarkable to see all the assistance and help we got over that very sad period of time. Okay. Other announcements or reports? Any? Okay, I'll just quickly report on two meetings that I attended as liaison last week. One was the Conservation Commission last Wednesday night. And just two quick things. River Cleanup is Saturday, September 27, 9 to 12. Anybody who wishes to volunteer can show up on the unpaved roadway on the south side when you enter West Cemetery and take part in it. They also reported on sort of a work session they had with Bill Hogan from DOT in Tomaso Nature Park, looking at the kinds of plantings that are going to go in adjacent to the small segment of the trail that goes along one of the inner sides of the park. And they were quite pleased with that, also some of the extra protections for wildlife as well. Committee on Aging, a bunch of great announcements. The café is going to be opening again in October. The new vehicle for Dial-A-Ride is in. And just to comment on Dial-A-Ride, it's always been a great service. There has been a real significant increase of the use of Dial-A-Ride over the last year too, which I think really shows how important it is to offer that service to our folks. And they're once again hosting the Grandparents Raising Grandchildren Conference, and that's a statewide thing that our senior center does. So that's it for me. Once again, anyone else? Okay, so there we're ready to go on to appointments and resignations, and we do have a motion for the first one.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Gettleman?
Like to make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Patricia Fongamy from the Library Board of Trustees.
Second, I'd like to comment that, you know, I've known Pat for many years, specifically since fourth grade. And she's been on the Library Board of Trustees for a long time, and she's also taken on, you know, the really challenging and sometimes difficult job of being chairperson of a board of trustees, so that I hope we will be thinking of some way to honor her service for all those years. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Can we send her a letter of thanks from the council?
Do that.
Thank you.
Okay. And did I remember to take a vote?
No.
No, okay. Yeah, that's right. So all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll accept Pat's resignation again with regret. Okay, are there other appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions? Okay, so we'll move on. Is there a liaison? I don't believe so here from the Board of Education? No? Okay, so we'll move right along to the report of our town attorney.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chairwoman. I just have a brief, a couple of brief things to talk about. First of all, the Fire Department Subcommittee has been working very diligently with the representatives of the Fire Department as well as the Fire Company. And there's been a tremendous amount of progress made regarding the committee's work. And I believe that you could be expecting some final report as well as other recommendations in the near future, probably be considered at the next council meeting. Also, we filed another action regarding zoning violations on Friday, having to do with agricultural activities that we're waiting to hear back from the court on. I know that many times it seems frustrating for the residents as well as some of the staff, town staff and the counselors with regard to a lot of these issues. But when it comes to blight and those types of issues, it's kind of like whack-a-mole. You know, you got one, and then another one pops up. And lots of times, we got one, and it seems to be a problem, and all of a sudden it disappears, and then we got something else. So I just, you know, be understanding when it comes to that, because once we have to go to court, things do not go fast. So just to let you know, and that's basically it for my report unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next is the report of the town manager.
Yes, good evening. I have the first item, an update, a quick update on re-world. It's, as you see in your packet, some correspondence, recent correspondence from the Bristol Burlington Health Department Attorney Ainsworth that indicates the only remaining option for the Health Department is to file suit in Superior Court. They've had, they had tried to refrain from doing so, hoping that the issuance of a notice of fines would spur re-world to correct the problem. The recent decision of the Department of Public Health reaffirms that the Health Department's original order is valid and that the sole remaining option is to file a civil suit to seek injunctive relief. So I'll keep you posted on when that happens, and we'll see what shakes out. Item number two is an update on our landfill closure. The Department of Energy Environmental Protections Bureau of Materials Management and Compliance Assurance Waste Engineering and Enforcement Division acknowledges the receipt of the as-built engineered drawing and the municipal recording and closure certification for the closed solid waste disposal area landfill located at Granger Lane in Plainville, Connecticut. So there's a copy of that letter in your packet. Based on the review of the above information, the town of Plainville has satisfied the requirements regarding the submittal of the as-built drawing and recordings of information on the municipal land records pursuant to State Statute 22A 209-13F and G, the regulations of the Connecticut State Agency's RCSA. In accordance with 22A 209-13C of the RCSA, this letter serves as notification that the department has determined that the closure of the landfill is satisfactory. So that is another chapter that is complete, the landfill. And as you know, we are pursuing an adaptive reuse for the landfill in terms of doing solar that we're pursuing with, and we'll have solar panels up there. We'll turn, you know, a liability into an asset for us to the tune of about $41,000 in revenue per year. So very happy with that. Item number three is Robertson Airport Lease and Maintenance Agreements. That is, you'll see later on under New Business. As part of the negotiations with Interstate Aviation, there was a change in ownership and name of the corporation, resulting in the new name of New England Aviation, Inc., NEA. The FAA suggested that the lease and maintenance agreements be separated as separate documents, or written as separate documents, excuse me. The term of the lease agreement shall be 10 years, commencing on September 1, 2025 and expiring on August 31, 2035. NEA shall have the option to extend this agreement for additional five, five-year periods, provided additional, two additional five-year periods, provided that the agreement has not terminated prior to the stated expiration date. NEA must exercise this renewal option by delivering the written notice specified in Article 23. Under rent, the lease is written as such. For the first two years of the term of this lease, NEA shall pay an annual base rent of $222,000 and monthly installments of $18,500. Thereafter, for the term of this lease, NEA will pay an annual base rent of $236,400 and monthly installments of $19,700, subject to annual adjustments tied to the Consumer Price Index, CPI, with a minimum increase of 2% and a maximum of 8%. The lease also specifies a provision for holding an annual open house, which is part of the lease negotiations. We felt it was important that that aspect continue on, as we have done as past practice. As for the maintenance, the town has written a comprehensive agreement that distinguishes routine maintenance from structural maintenance, among other things. It clearly defines what is expected of NEA and what the town will be responsible for. The town shall pay NEA $4,000 per month totaling $48,000 annually for the maintenance services rendered under this agreement. Maintenance, I'm sorry, payments shall be subject to annual adjustments tied to the Consumer Price Index, CPI, with a minimum increase of 2% and maximum of 8%. The term of this agreement shall commence on the same date on the underlying lease operating agreement for fixed base operator services between the town of Plainville and New England Aviation at Robertson Airport, which is identified as 4B8 in Plainville, Connecticut, and continue for 10 years. Both draft agreements are in your packet, and there's an item under New Business to approve both the lease and the operating agreement, maintenance service agreement. Next is for, number four, Historic Preservation Grant. This annual grant will be one of two grant applications for a multi-office document preservation project. Upon approval from the State Library, the project will include scanning permanent and non-permanent records and the technical services and the planning and zoning departments. There is an item under New Business to adopt resolution entitled Resolution Authorizing Application for Historic Preservation Grant. Item number five is the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Agreement for Valley Water Property. The town received a grant agreement under the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Program, OWSA, from Connecticut Deep. The grant reimburses the town for acquiring 48.8 acres of former watershed land in 2021 adjacent to Southington's Crescent Lake Recreation Area, formerly known as Bradley Mountain Open Space, OSWA number 635. At the previous meeting of the town council, previous meeting, the town council adopted a resolution referencing the property as Bradley Mountain. The Connecticut Department of environmental Protection is requesting a change to reference the property as Valley Water Property. There is no substantial substantive changes to that. It's just, there was an oversight in terms of the title. We've always been referring to it as Bradley Mountain, and obviously, the state wants it corrected to read Valley Water Property. So there's an item under New Business to rescind and repeal Resolution 2825, adopted by the town council on August 18, 2025, and adopt a new resolution regarding an open space grant agreement for property known as the Valley Water Property. And item six, Linden and Tofflon Schools Brick Repointing and Sealing. The town and Board of Education are seeking to proceed with brick repointing and sealing work at Linden Street School and Lewis Tofflon School. This project will complete the remaining brick repointing needed at Linden and provide sealing of the brickwork to protect and extend the life of the building. And at Tofflon, the scope includes necessary brick repairs around the building, including a retaining wall and several pillars with crumbling bases. In addition, the brickwork will be power washed and sealed to improve durability and prevent future deterioration. The total proposal for this work is $70,319.33. Funding for the project has been allocated through the recent capital improvements bond referendum, in which the Board of Education budgeted approximately $70,000 for this purpose. There is an item under New Business to award bid 2026 16S Linden and Tofflon Schools Brick Repointing and Sealing to Millennium Buildings, Inc. of Torrington, Connecticut, under the CRPC's EZIQC program in the amount of $70,319.33. And I'll pause there before the final two items of financial dashboard and happenings.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from council members on this? I guess not, so continue to financial dashboard.
Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Chairwoman, I did have just one quick comment, if I could. When the manager was going through the airport lease and maintenance agreement, I wanted to just add, just a brief comment with regard to that, that there are certain provisions regarding expansion, building of other hankers, et cetera, that would lead to further financial considerations that we didn't detail since they're going to be in the future, but they're all part of the agreements.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Just for the council's information.
Okay, thank you for that information.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, now, we have financial dashboard.
Financial dashboard, yes. I would say unremarkable at this point, so we're early in the financial year. We are still going to be looking at expenditures that are running slightly higher, as you see, over the two-year average at 25.39%, the two-year average at 18.63%. at 18.63%. I think with respect to some notes there on terms of health insurance and other items, we're going to take a deeper dive and take a look at that. But as it breaks down, the general government expenditure budget, 33.28%, the two-year average at 28.11%. And on the Board of Education side, 20.68% spent, the two-year average is 13. So I'll be sitting with the finance director to kind of drill down in that. And I think a lot of it has to do with maybe some timing of bills as well, or other items that were unanticipated. So we'll take a look at that. Next page is the breakdown for police dispatch overtime expenditures. We're running high for the police general overtime and also dispatch. So that recorded or spent through August 31st, $122,783. The two-year average is 83.31, so 23.39% there. So I'm sure there's a few things like the balloon fest and other items that are probably likely captured in there. But again, we'll get, we'll get detail for the September meeting. The roadways is, is running slightly high as well. They have spent $7,352. Two-year average is $5,148. So they're in the negative there, $2,204 for roadways. Building and grounds is running slightly under. It expended through August 31st, $6,041. The two-year average is $7,570. So really, just slightly under. And on the solid waste and recycling, I think there isn't the full picture there because I don't believe we have the August numbers on the recycling side. It might also, the note is for recycling, but it likely appears that it's both solid waste and recycling. But just looking at these numbers, we'll get clarification. But it looks like the solid waste is running under the two-year average thus far through August 31st at 994 tons versus 1,065 for the two-year average. So we will clarify and confirm those numbers. On the revenue side, looking just fine. Collected through 8/31, $34,652,953. That's 45.42% received. The two-year average is 44.69. On the tax side, the same, $33,477,354. Represents 57.93% collected. Two-year average is 57.94. So we're right in line on revenue. On the fund balance, still maintaining a healthy fund balance, 14.53% or $11,081,982. And projecting that the fund balance as budgeted will be the same number as last year, $1,424,500. And that will shake out at the end of the fiscal year. Onto special revenue funds. Recreation Fund spent through 8/31, $146,290. And that is a percent expended of 45.49. And they are, their two-year average is 43.07. So running just slightly higher there on their expenditures. And their revenues, 19.88% received. Two-year average is 20.91. So a little, little bit lower on the, on the revenue side, a little bit higher on the expenditure thus far. Robertson Airport, really minimal expenditures, $14,000 versus revenue of $26,000. So not much to report there. On the water pollution control side, everything on the expenditure side looks in line with the two-year average. They've spent $2386,650. That represents 46.54% expended, and the two-year average is 46.56. On the revenue side, $25,271. Significant backlog there in booking, I think, and receiving. So that's under the 7.91% two-year average. So I think there's just a blip in terms of collection there. And on library, the last fund, library is spent $227,964, representing a 26.55% expended, just under their two-year average of 28.7%. On the revenue side, $172,357. That's 20.07% received. The two-year average is 24.73. And then finally, onto our major projects, of which we lead with the middle school renovation fund. We're just really getting underway there. So there's not a whole lot to report other than the construction manager architect working with the town and the Board of Education diligently on pricing and planning for, the latest meeting today was about the phasing of the project that will occur while students are in, in school, obviously. This is a renovate as a new project. So there's a lot of intricate movement with, regarding the phasing, and it's a multi-year project. So this is still very much new in the planning stages of trying to get everything wrapped up and trying to get a better handle on the, on the numbers and the projected numbers. So great team there, I should say, that's very diligent and, and working hard to make sure that project is one that we can be proud of. On our Heights sewer project, pretty much wrapped up with that. I don't have anything new to report on that. The turf maintenance fund, nothing new to report there. ARPA fund dollars, also the same, nothing, nothing, pretty much wound down and, and complete. Whiting Street Construction also complete, and the road bond also wrapped up. So likely, the next meeting, I did talk with the chair about future, you know, from November on, and see what this looks like in terms of the, the report. But there might be some, some ideas for modification in that, and I'm certainly open to some suggestion and ideas. But I'm open to, I'll take questions if there are any questions for financial report.
Any questions or comments on the financial dashboard? Onto happenings.
Great. Thank you very much. We do have some happenings to share today. Fall bulk pickup started on September 8th and will end on October 27th. Plainville has an on-demand policy for the collection of bulk pickup. So residents who currently have curbside waste and recycling collection are eligible to receive one bulk pickup per year, free of charge, for acceptable large items that do not fit within the normal waste collection. You can visit the town of Plainville's website at www.plainvillect.com for a complete list of acceptable bulk items and instructions on how to request a bulk pickup. From the Plainville Public Library and all information on library programs, including registration, you can call the library at 860-793-1446, or visit www.plainvillect.com livery. Deadly Good Stories on Tuesday, September 16th at 6:00 PM in the Chase Auditorium. You can join author Steve Lisgow for a brief reading of Sweet Ladies of Death, followed by a discussion. There will also be a blood drive on Friday, September 19th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM in the Chase Auditorium. You do need to book an appointment for this, and you can do so at redcrossblood.org and use code PLAINVILL with a capital P as the sponsor code. And from the Senior Center. And for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Senior Center at 860-747-5728. All programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. Veterans Help will be on Tuesday, September 16th at 10:00 AM. Veteran Service Officer with the Connecticut Department of Veterans Affairs, Jason Coppola, meets with members of the Senior Center. This is by appointment only, and you can schedule an appointment with Jason by making an appointment and calling him at 203-805-6340. And lastly, Not So Empty Nest, an event happening on Tuesday, September 23rd, from 9:00 AM to 1:30 PM. This is open to grandparents or relatives raising grandchildren. And this year's theme is Under the Influence: How Vapes and Views Shape Your Mental Health. You can hear from keynote speakers, enjoy a breakfast and a Panera lunch, and visit the Self-Care Boulevard, which includes resources and giveaways. You must register with the Senior Center to attend. And that's all I have today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is public comments, and we'll open up, anyone, to anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council. Procedure is simple. Please step forward to the podium and give your name and address. There is a three-minute limit, and the first reminder means that you have 30 seconds left, and the second one means, like, wrap it up very quickly. So anyone who would like to speak? Mr. King?
Hello, my name is David King.
David, sorry to interrupt. If you don't mind, we're suppressing the button on your, thank you.
Okay, how's that? Oh, my name is David King, address 88 Trumbull Ave. I am the Chairman of the Aviation Commission, and I am here in opposing of the lease approval. This lease has been led by Robert Lee, who has not resided in our town for years and has not officially been an employee for quite a few years. He has directed us to use a consultant to get the value on our property, and we promptly threw out the numbers. I believe the consultant gave us a number of approximately $36,000 a month for just the buildings only, not the entire airport. This lease is for the entire airport, which they will effectively have total control for 20 years, assuming, you know, the lease is renewed within 10. We've had members on the Aviation Commission that have since resigned that would have been a great asset in this process. They were, they were in the commercial real estate industry for 40 years, but we chose not to take their opinions and professional insights into mind when we were doing this process. And since the current administration of Interstate has taken over, I've noticed that we've had a decrease in aircraft at the airport. I do not feel that they are a good fit for our town, and I think that we need to find somebody else. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and I'd also like to thank Mike, Andy, Dave, Chris, and Morris for, you know, their time on this process.
Thank you. And anyone else who would like to participate in public comment? Oops, Lou, Frankos, yeah. Oh, Lou, if you can just give us a minute, please? I think.
I would just make a comment.
You would like to comment?
Right, I'd just like to comment with regard to some of the comments that were just made by Mr. King. I did participate in this process, and I would disagree with regard to the analysis of the rent from the consultant. I did take a look at it. I also spoke with a member of the Appraisal Institute. He's an appraiser, used to be president of the Connecticut section of that with regard to how you go about valuing an airport, et cetera. And I think that the commission, that the process that we went through negotiating back and forth was a reasonable one, and that the economics of it are reasonable, given the difficulty operating an airport. The real goal is to keep them in business. So we're not selling it. We're running a business there. That was the basis of the lease negotiations, just for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair, I'll just echo that. It is, as you can imagine, and David can speak to this, as a member liaison to the airport, a complex operation. It has always been that we do not have the internal expertise to manage, nor would we want the town to manage something that complex. But the lease agreement, I think, struck was, took long months, almost a year or longer, to negotiate. And I think we've got a, I disagree with David. I think we've got a good product. And I think we've got an entity that knows what they're doing. And I think it's the best win-win situation for, for the town to be able to have a gem of the airport, the oldest airfield in Connecticut. And I think that we can play up upon that history. And I think the improvements have been registering with, with aviation buffs all across the state. So, you know, with the recent, you know, amenities in terms of the, you know, observation area that we have there, among many other things, that all of the technical things that you've heard me talk about, the AWAS and POPPEE and all of these other, you know, instrument rating and, and things of that nature, that it's, I think it's, it's a gem that we have, and that I think going long-term is, is our best interest. So I think we've got a good product here. And I want to thank the members involved, and Andy and, and Morris and others that, you know, were instrumental in putting this together. It was not an easy lift.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, just wanted to clarify one other thing. The, the goal of the, the process was to negotiate a lease that would allow the airport to be as self-sustaining as possible. So there's an airport fund that manages that process. And one of our major outcomes for, for this process was to make sure that we generated enough revenue from the lease so that we can maintain capital projects. We can provide match to FAA grants that we receive for improvements. And at this point, you know, aside from time, from staff going into it, you don't see a transfer of money from the operational fund to the airport fund. So keeping that as a self-sustaining fund was really the goal of this lease negotiation process. And I think we do accomplish that with the lease that has been proposed to the council.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Frankos?
What's up?
The floor is yours now.
Okay. This, Lou Frankos, 10 Fairbanks Street. This should be quick. Regarding the financial dashboard, all I'm asking for is, can I receive a hard copy?
Sure.
For the?
Yes, absolutely, yes, yeah.
Okay. That's, that's the only problem, problem. That's the only.
That's it? Oh, my goodness, okay. Okay, floor's still open for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak? Yes.
Hello, my name is Megan Strank, and I live at 32 Webster Street, and I know most of the people here. And I want to thank everybody over there for your service, and I'm sorry for your loss. I just wanted to comment tonight and thank Mr. Paulus also. He's visited our bus stop on Webster. We've been here for 18 years. My kids are now freshmen in high school. I have a 10-year-old and an eight-year-old at Tofflon. And as you can imagine, we have a lot of families between Webster Street, Jeanette, and Welch, which is between Broad and West Main. We inherited a problem when Route 72 was changed. Webster Street became quite the cut-through, and Mr. Lee did a nice job of giving us some stop signs. But it has not solved the problem. And as we all know, there are lots of crazy people out there driving, texting, hi, you name it, or just not giving a crap about whoever's walking or crossing the street. So I know Mr. Paulus has been very helpful in trying to get the next steps going. I, I begged for temporary speed bumps because I get that it's not a quick fix and that there's money involved in departments and neighbors and whatnot. But I just want to go on public record stating my concern for my kid's safety. I've already had one daughter almost get hit by a car since school started. It's very important that we change this problem, not just for my kid, but for all 13 children that are in that neighborhood that are riding their bikes, that are walking, and that are going to the bus stop. And I've been asking for over a decade. So please, help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Floor is still open for public comment? No one? Well, I guess then we'll end public comment. Okay. Next item is old business. There's no old business that isn't, isn't tabled. So we'll move right along to new business. And there are a number of motions that we are going to be considering. So starting with item number one.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Getteman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the ordinance, Chapter 355, taxation with the following addition. Modification of Section 355-65D to state, "The surviving spouse must have owned or inherited and continues to own and occupy as a principal residence real property in the town of Plainville, which is subject to local taxation." And B, reclassification of this article from Section 12 to Section 13, Section 355-63 through 355-69.
Second. Thank you. Second, and I've heard several seconds. Discussion on this motion.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Getteman?
I'd just like to say, I, I kind of wish we were proactive on this, on this ordinance.
as opposed to being reactive. When an individual signs up to be a first responder, whether it's police, fire, EMT, it affects the whole family, and it's just not the individual signing up, it is the entire family. And when, and when we, you lose somebody in the, in the line of duty, it affects the family, and I think at a minimum, this is the minimum that we can do to support that, support his fam, anyone's family moving forward. I hope other towns take note that it can happen in a blink of an eye and change their, their tax ordinances. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the motion? Okay, now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Item number two. Motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Sorry. Motion to approve the lease and operating agreement for fixed-based operator services with New England Aviation, Inc., and authorize the town manager to execute. And B, approve of the maintenance service agreement with New England Aviation, Inc., and authorize the town manager to execute.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Item number three.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Underwood.
Motion to adopt the resolution entitled Resolution Authorizing Application for Historic Preservation Grant.
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item number four.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to A, rescind and repeal Resolution 20-2025, adopted by the Plainville Town Council on August 18, 2025, and B, adopt a resolution regarding Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Agreement for property known as Valley Water Property.
Second.
Second, Councilman Hurley, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and item number five.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Hurley.
Motion to award bid number 2026-16S, Linden and Tofflon Schools Brick Repointing and Sealing under CRPC's EZIQC program to Millennium Buildings Incorporated, Torrington, Connecticut, in the amount of $70,319.33.
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously, and the last item, number six.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Gettiman.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this passes unanimously as well. Are there any other discussions of interest, either staff or members of the council?
Yeah, if I may, just there's been a number of DOT announcements, and we have done our best to communicate that via the social media and our website platforms about, you know, the various initiatives that they're doing that may impact the traffic patterns and so forth, and we're also working our way through a analysis for another developer, commercial developer, and might have a, a traffic impact as well on New Britton Avenue. So I'll keep you posted on that, but yeah, we're doing the best we can to, to make sure traffic is, is flowing and giving as much information as we can so people can make alternate routes if necessary. That's all I have.
Thank you for that, that update. Anything else? Okay, we do not have an executive session this evening, so entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're all set. Meeting's adjourned.